Good evening. Welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We will begin by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take the chairman's prerogative here. Today is known throughout this country as Administrative Assistance Day. And as such, we would like to recognize our administrative assistant, Kathleen Hope, and to all the appreciation to you for all of the work and support and continuing good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. The first item is Mr. Chavez, 23013. We have a variance. Come up here, please. Good evening to you all. We had a site visit by, we've had two site visits by a number of our board members. Are there any comments of the board members?
Chair, would you like to open the public hearing first, please?
I think I would like to open the public hearing first. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now we're official. Welcome again. Who attended?
The first meeting, Paul, Jerry, and myself were there. And then the second time, you graciously had Jerry and I come over and look. And I appreciate your time and the efforts.
Thank you.
Any observations you care to share?
Well, the second time we were there because we hadn't done our job the first time. And we missed out on where the waste was. And we were very happy to see that it was an enclosed container.
I'm happy to. Thank you.
Others?
When I was there, I thought it was a nice-looking pen. The chickens were well-kept. I didn't smell any smells or anything like that. It's in the back. It's secluded. I did hear the rooster a couple of times. I don't think it was that loud. But it did kind of make a couple noises that roosters make.
He recognized you.
Yes, he did. Yeah.
Well, they crow when they feel threatened.
Have you considered anything in terms of the rooster? That seems to be the one issue here in terms of any decision on that. We'll need to move the rooster out. Okay, okay. I'm sorry about that, but I think in terms of the noise and where we are, I think... You'll still get eggs. Get a lot of eggs. Okay, therefore, we have any public comments? I don't see any. Have we received any other additional comments?
No, we have not.
Okay. With that, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a resolution here. Let's see. Who wrote this? Would you like to read it?
I will.
Please.
Resolution to grant area variance for Chavez animal husbandry at 32 East Market Street, Hyde Park. Resolution 2301Z. Whereas the applicant, Edith Chavez, has submitted an application for area variance to allow animal husbandry to be conducted closer to neighboring residents then allowed and to permit unenclosed storage, nope, enclosed. Maneuver. So...
It's enclosed.
Yeah, so we're good with that. We can take out "close," "closer to." Whereas the project is depicted on a drawing prepared by Mr. Chavez, prepared on or about February 24th, 2023, on a map showing measurements determined by Dutchess County Parcel Access, the aerial measurements. And whereas the applicant seeks the first variance from zoning law, actually it'd be the only variance, seeks the variance from zoning law 108-4.3B-5B to change the distance of the chicken and rooster pen to all 14 residents. In particular, the ones that are within the 250 feet.
Correct. Understood.
Whereas, 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 now hereby it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, zoning law Section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance, singular. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The applicant applied for animal husbandry of chickens and a rooster. The chickens are out of sight and are contained within a pen located in the woods behind the applicant's house. The animals are relatively quiet. The noise generated by the chickens is further mitigated by the forest cover and insulating topography, which is indicative to Hyde Park, I think. In addition, chickens eat bug sticks, which will benefit the neighborhood rooster will, or neighborhood. The rooster will crow to indicate safety for their flock or to communicate their dominance or to warn of danger. However, husbandry of the rooster may violate Town Law Chapter 75-4M, which specifies that loud birds which disturb the peace are unreasonable noise and are subject to fines. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method, or some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these area, this area variance. Usable area on the site is limited. The applicant has located the chicken pens in the most sensible location. The Chavez family sees benefits in teaching their children animal husbandry of chickens as part of the home environment. The Chavez family shares the eggs with adjoining neighbors. And I keep hearing that everybody wants that to continue. The Zoning Board of Appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary. The variance will be made less substantial by the conditions...
Conditioning.
Oh, the conditioning, its approval upon the removal of the rooster, while the applicant will still receive most of the intended benefit. The first variance is nu, the variance is numerically substantial. And there is no second.
I think that should be amended to read, the variance is not numerically substantial.
Okay. The animal husbandry of only chickens may be conducted at 250 feet from nearby residents as opposed to 350 with the rooster. The removal of the rooster will further decrease the number of nearby residents required in the first var, in the variance to six, from 14 to six. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The coop is cleaned weekly by the applicant. When the coop is cleaned, the manure is composted. I would put it in an enclosed container. The difficulties are self-created. Without approvals, the applicant purchased chickens and a rooster and has participated in animal husbandry for several years. Applicant sought the area variances after receiving a notice of violation and order to remedy from the zoning administrator, who is not the wicked wish of the Lord, right?
I don't know.
Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions: removal of the rooster from 32 East Market Street. The granted variance is specific to the chickens only. Any change or addition of animals will result in revocation of the variance, payments of all fees, and escrow.
With those, with that reading and the changes which reflect a single variance and not one for the chicken waste, I would ask for a second on the motion.
Second.
Just a moment. Yeah, it should be on the resolution as amended.
At the revolu, yes, the resolution as amended. And there's a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are all set for your chickens and good luck. And good luck on all that work. Do you have to get up early in the morning and do it? Not too early?
Not all the time.
Okay. Can you come up here a minute? I have something for you. Now, this is for your brother and you. For your chickens. Not for your chickens, it's for you.
Chair, I just wanted to remind them of the next step. They still have to seek site plan approval from the planning board. I don't know if they're aware of that. That is their next step.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you very much.
Are there requirements that we didn't even think about, or?
No.
No.
Which they didn't get the variance, it wasn't worth applying to the planning board, so...
Okay, sequence.
So, the application to the planning board, okay. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Next item is Margaret O'Neil. 24 Fuller Lane, Hyde Park, is seeking a variance on a setback. I would call for a new public hearing. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do.
So, the front, the previous owner took the front porch and closed it in to make a closet. It's a wonderful closet, but the house sort of looks like a house with an outhouse stuck on the front of it, if you've driven by the house. So, I had an architect friend design a front porch adjacent to the existing porch because the owner had moved the door, taken a window, you know, these are the, these are all the cookie cutter little caulk pods there in that area. So, the new front porch will have a, will have a roof that comes up from the existing roof on the outhouse, excuse me, on the closet that sticks out.
No longer.
And it will have stairs that go down to the side, so along the, along the house, and railings, and a handrail, which will be a good thing because the current stoop doesn't have a handrail.
And you'll have a front hall closet, too.
And I'll still have the closet, right? It's a wonderful thing. It's actually a very nice closet. It just leaves the house without an adequate front porch and without a covered front porch, so there's no protection from weather. So, this will have a lot of advantages, plus it will look better. And there are several houses on the next street over that have that sideways porch design, so it will be very similar to that. And the house is now painted dark blue. That was done in the last few weeks. And so, it'll be, the porch will be in white, the white trim to match the rest of the house. I think it'll be kind of pretty, and I plan to do window boxes and flowers, and I'm excited.
Oh, looks good. So, that's one.
That's one. And then the other is, the previous owner built a deck on the back that is 20 feet wide and about eight feet deep, which is about far enough to take three steps and fall off the edge. It's not really even big enough for a table, right? And then it has unprotected steps on three sides. I'm 72. I don't like unprotected steps very much. It's just too risky. So, what I'd like to do is have a, have a deck that is the same, about the same width, about 20 feet wide, but adds four feet, so it's 10 feet.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet deep, so it's, no, 14, it's six feet, so it's 14 feet deep. And I'd like to put a covered sun porch on it with a shed roof because it's a south-facing, and I'd like to, I want to, the house has already been converted to all-electric, which means I have two baseboard heaters, count them two. I need to do some work on the HVAC systems, but I'd like to, I'd like to do solar panels eventually on that, on that south-facing roof. And so, the shed roof will give me just a little more roof space and be consistent with the existing, with the existing slope. And I may build that in stages. I may, you know, do the deck and the frame and the roof, and then close it in, kind of depending on cash flow and...
Good.
And...
Sounds like an ambitious project.
Plans.
But I can appreciate a bigger porch.
Yeah, and I think it'll expand. These houses aren't huge without a lot of, you know, gathering space inside, so this will give a nice, a nice protected outdoor space because we do have mosquitoes in Hyde Park, oddly, so...
You, most, or some of the variances are mainly because the zoning was put in place after the building was built?
I do understand that. I was, as I was telling your wonderful staff, my very first job when I was 23 years old was explaining planning and zoning to the residents of Jefferson, of Cole County, Missouri, around Jefferson City, back in 1974, because the county wanted, yeah, you could, rural Missourians, right? So, I know, I know some about, a little about some of that zoning. And I do understand, you know, zoning being put in place afterwards. And the houses are just, the way they're on the lot doesn't work. So, I'm, I'm seeking a variance in order to make beneficial additions to the house.
Questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Nope. Paul?
I have no questions.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Good, good. Is there any, anybody from the public? I don't see any. Okay. This looks like an ambitious project. I commend you for that. There being no other public hearing, we have not received anything in written?
We have not.
Okay, therefore, I would, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I think we have, Mr. Agarwal?
Yep.
Do you have, would you, would you?
Sure.
Read the resolution, please?
Resolution to grant area variances, Margaret O'Neil, no, O'Neil.
O'Neil.
24 Fuller Lane, Hyde Park, New York, Resolution 23-05Z. Whereas the applicant, Margaret, has submitted an application for area variances to replace and expand the front porch and to span and cover an existing rear deck at property located at 24 Fuller Lane, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel 6065-20-812006 in the neighborhood and historic overlay district. Whereas the project is depicted on several sketches supplied by the applicant dated October 30th of last year and March 8th of this year. Whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law Section 108-5.15 to permit the construction and expansion of a front porch for the front yard, setback on Fuller Lane. Whereas the applicant also seeks an area variance from the same zoning law section to permit the construction and expansion of a front porch with a front yard setback of 30 feet where 50 feet is required. And she also seeks, whereas the applicant seeks a third variance from zoning, the same zoning law section, to permit the expansion of an existing deck with a front yard setback on Garden Street of 29 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the Town Law in Hyde Park, zoning law Section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variances. One, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. This project will provide an attractive porch similar to other houses in the neighborhood and a covered back deck also similar to others in the neighborhood, too. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances. The position of the existing house and deck do not allow for the project to occur without these variances as the lot is small and has very small, and has a very small, limited area in which to do the necessary work. Three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. The front yard setbacks represent variances of 12%, 24%, and 42% from the 50-foot required. So, and then parentheses, 44 feet versus 50 feet, 38 versus 50, and 29 versus 50. Four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The requested variances will improve the character and appearances of the surrounding neighborhood. Five, the difficulties are self-created. The applicant purchased the house as is. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions: One, pursuant to Section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Congratulations, Ms. O'Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to the project and good luck on that.
Thank you. I'm glad to be a new Hyde Park resident and very pleased to be here.
We're glad to have you. From Missouri, too.
I, yeah, yeah. I'm actually doing the last piece of shifting my legal residence, closing on my condo in St. Louis today, this week, and registering my car tomorrow, so...
Well, welcome to the Hudson River.
I'm once again a New Yorker. I was born in White Plains. I've done full circle. I'm back in, back in New York. So, we do have a building permit that Rich Pottenberg submitted with a check, I believe, that's in my file someplace. So, can that move, can that go ahead and move forward now?
Did we, we need to do a site plan waiver because you're in an overlay district?
Okay, so...
So, there's one more, one more step?
Okay, so what do I need to do to do that?
Call me tomorrow.
Okay. Do I, do I have your phone number, Kathleen?
845-229-5111, extension two.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil.
Thank you so very much. Site, site plan waiver, is that what, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Good. Our next item is Marcos Nchak, 2304Z, 16 Papagalleen. Do we have a representative for that? Good. Welcome back, sir.
As advertised.
As advertised.
During our field meeting.
I know. You're looking for a variance to allow construction within the Hudson River Stream Corridor, allowing demolition of the existing house and replace it with a new single-family home on substantially the same footprint.
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like to open the public hearing, Chair? Please.
I would like to open the public hearing. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're official.
Okay. Well, we can just transfer what you just said into the official record because that's exactly what the proposal is, to replace the existing house with a new one.
Oh, he needs to speak into the microphone.
Microphone. Sorry, there's a handheld.
There's a handheld one there.
Oh.
No, there's a hand...
No, no, that's okay. You know, it's been a long day. I think I'll sit down.
You can hide behind there if you want.
Yeah, you can.
That's right, I can hide behind.
We can still hear you.
Well, you're all pretty familiar with the site, or most of you are, anyway.
Familiar.
And there isn't much room to do anything that's not within the 100-foot stream corridor, which is shown on, let's see, what's this one? Yeah, this is the variance plan, which is a little bit more simplified because the 100-foot setback line is really the cogent part of this whole thing. It also sent, I think, a site plan, existing conditions S1, which showed the existing footprint of the house. And then D, which is the one that we have here, shows the proposed footprint of the house. And this particular project and this house has been the subject of much back and forth between the zoning administrator and me and the project architect and the planning board chairman. And I think it's kind of pretty much self-explanatory as to what we're looking to do.
We are looking, I mean, the corridor, and this is a new variance. This is not a continuation of the old variance at all.
Correct.
So, you're basically building in the stream corridor?
Yes. We're taking down the stream corridor and we're building in the stream corridor.
Now, from, a number of us visited because of the former variance on the pool.
Correct.
We had a chance to look at the site a little bit. What, how do you see changing this new site?
Yeah.
From where, what it is now?
It's the same, it's basically, it's the same footprint. It's on the same spot.
Right.
The bird flies over, there's a footprint for the existing house, and there's a footprint for the new house. The footprint for the new house is essentially at the same spot as the old house. What we did do was add a couple of things on the north side, which are outside of the existing footprint, but they meet the setback requirements for zoning. But we're here tonight for the stream corridor.
The height of the house is going to change? I mean...
The height, the height of the house, as measured by the town of Hyde Park, will be slightly lower than the existing one.
Well, the existing one is about eight feet?
Oh, you mean the height above sea level?
Yes.
Ah, okay. I thought you meant the building height itself. The existing one is at about seven, a little over seven.
Right.
And that's where the drive-through is?
Right.
Okay. And the new one is going to be at 11.
Okay, so the first floor will be at 11?
Yes.
So, this will be raised on what?
Concrete foundation with fill.
Okay.
So, that, the ground, we're going to call it, we'll call it the ground floor. It's basically, it's going to be a heated slab.
The stream corridor line that we have in that upper right-hand corner has a very odd line. Where is the actual stream?
The river is the stream.
Oh, we're talking about the river?
Yes.
Yeah. It's the river.
Oh, okay.
This is the river.
Yeah, there isn't any stream there.
So, we're pretty close here, then?
Well, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You anticipate, how close are you to the stream at this point?
Well, the original variance that was issued in 1980 was for a 10-foot setback from the river.
Okay, then my guess is the river's changed?
Very good because the deed, there are a number of deed descriptions for this parcel. But the orig...
The latest one would have been with the new owner who has purchased this.
Right, but, yeah, but that one, that one was totally unacceptable also because if you looked at the original deed for this out of Hyler, it said along the shoreline of the river, and you're correct. If the shoreline of the river changes, then the deed line changes. So, this, this deed line, when it goes along the river, is the shoreline, which is the mean high watermark of the river now because we had it all resuraveled. is the mean high water mark of the river now, because we had it all resuraveled.
Okay.
And, and, um, come to find out there were a couple of parts of the house, the existing house, that were over the line, if you will, that 10-foot setback line. So, the proposed, or the new replacement house footprint stays wholly within that original 10-foot setback.
Okay, so you're looking for 10 feet from the river, the existing?
Well, we already have that.
Yeah.
We already have that variance from 1980.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, uh, apply here.
No, we're just looking for stream corridor.
So, what happens when the house comes down? The variance is lost.
Right.
So, it's a new variance.
Right. Which would be 10 feet.
If it's the same footprint.
So, we're building a house within the stream corridor, which is what we're asking for, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. We're not asking for a variance for the little pieces that are extending out.
No, but, but what you just said really was a bit chilling to me at this particular point in the project development, because you said when the house comes down, the variance goes away.
Correct.
So, is the house coming down?
Yeah.
Is the, are the footings staying?
Uh, probably some of them are.
I, I, the code for non-conforming structures, I went around when this was adopted with the attorneys. Now, we can talk to this attorney, but it appears as though, once it comes down, you lose the, the, oh, because it's a variance, but I think you still lose the non-conforming status, because it's not non-conforming. So, we'll have to talk about that. I'll have to take a look at that. Yeah, we'll have to look at that. I was not thinking of ones that didn't have a variance already. I was thinking of just a non-conforming structure that was coming down and being rebuilt. But this one had a variance, so this one's different, and I'll discuss it with the, we'll discuss it with the attorney.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess, I guess that about wraps this up, then.
Well, I'd like to, what I'd like to do, too, is, I've asked the, uh, again, the representatives from the, from the climate committee of the, of the town to take a look at that, too. And I don't know if we'll need to get in touch with you or if we're, I'll have to ask if, if they want to see the site again or not, uh, just to get their, uh,
Oh, yeah, wasn't there somebody that was there?
There was, there was, yeah. But that was for the pool, now that we've looked at.
Yeah, we had quite a conversation about the house, too, but that's okay.
Right.
And the other thing, the other thing I wanted to let the board know is that there's a flood development permit that's required, and they are required to elevate that lowest opening. I think that's why there's such a, a great difference in, from the eight feet to the 11 feet. Is that right, Pete?
Well, well, no, actually, since we're gonna, since this whole thing with the 10-foot, which is new to me tonight, um, no, actually, it, it should be elevated to 10.
But you're going to 11. That's fine. But it does need to be elevated.
Excuse me?
Does need to be elevated some, because it needs to be the BFE plus two, and then I think Westermeier said plus another one in the building code, but that may not have gone into effect yet.
Plus another one? Two plus one? Oh, so anyway, we're still okay.
You're still okay, which is
Yeah.
We'll have to talk to him about that.
I'm assuming you're anticipating, um, this house was there for 43 years, roughly, 40 years?
Yeah.
So, in another 40 years, the river will be at least another 12 inches higher?
That's true.
Or more?
Yep.
In terms of this, which means probably the line will have changed by then, too.
Yeah, who knows?
11 feet.
Believe me, I won't be around for it.
Well, you know, they've got miracles now.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. What I would like to do, then, is, uh, to continue this public hearing. Motion to continue this?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. I think we've got some more information to get here, and, now, look at this. It's a challenge. Obviously, engineering-wise, it's a challenge.
Not as much as the town permits.
Thank you, sir. last, we have a holding name. Beck Road.
He's not here.
Not here?
No. That's a neighbor.
Are you here to talk to that?
No, I just wanted to listen. I wouldn't need that.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess we need to open the public hearing on the holding 23-02Z. Is there a
So, excuse me, Chair, um, that's just a new application introduction, so it was not advertised as a public hearing, so there's no need to open and adjourn a public hearing.
All right, all right. So, there being no representative, I think we would wait for next month.
Yes. We will put it on the agenda again for next month and hope he shows up. I did hear he might have been ill.
Okay. Um, we did, uh, there's a couple of things that we neglected, too, and I'd like to, uh, a motion to approve the minutes for the February 22nd, um, meeting of this year. Motion to, to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those, is there any other business? Counselor, anything?
Uh, not for me. I just wanted to make a note, uh, that if we are adding a variance for Marcos in Chalk, then they'll have to send out new notices, and, uh, we'll have to re-advertise for that public hearing.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right. Anything else?
If we wanted to go for a site visit for Beck, is it now or after we open the public hearing?
Probably after we open the public hearing. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll need to do that. Okay, there being no other business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there so, is there a motion for it?
No, motion to adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, before we, uh, we cut.